Good morning. We'll go ahead and call the Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025, regular meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners to order. I'd like to welcome everybody here. We've got a full crowd. We've got some nonprofits in the crowd today that we're going to recognize and just want to welcome everybody here as well as those watching online. We'll go ahead and move to our invocation. I'll ask Vice Chairman Jones for the invocation and the pledge.
Please stand for all those that can. Heavenly Father, we just thank you. We thank you for allowing us to be here on this September for a new month and new beginnings. We thank you for a wonderful Labor Day weekend. God, we ask that you would just continue to bless us and we know that it's a privilege to serve and make wise choices and decisions for all the citizens of Cumberland County. Lord, we ask for prayer and just keep those that are uplifted, who have lost, those that have passed for various reasons. We ask for prayer for our, all of our soldiers, our veterans, as well as our first responders and all families in Cumberland County. Again, God, we just thank you for this opportunity to serve as we hope to continue to do things in decency and order and may this day be blessed as you order our steps. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and move to recognitions now. We have some recognitions of retired Cumberland County employees. If I can ask Mark E. Devon from the Sheriff's Office to come up to the podium if he's here. All right. All right. Mr. Tyson, you don't have to go down. All right, next, we will move to Cheryl McLaurin. And we have Cheryl McLaurin. She is with the Public Health Department. The date's a service, so you've served our county from January 9th, 1995, to February 28th, 2025. Just want to thank you for your long service to this community. More importantly, all that you do for the citizens of our community over the many years of service. I'm going to come down and present the plaque, but I'll open it up to any other commissioners if they'd like to make a comment. Go ahead, Vice Chairman.
I just wanted to say thank you for your service. It's a pleasure to serve on the Public Health Board. I know the work that you all do over there with Dr. Green and it's very, service-wise, very well needed. And again, I want you to make sure that you enjoy yourself on retirement with your family and make sure you get some travel in and we can't thank you enough. It's very well appreciated. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? All right, Mr. McLaurin, I'll ask the manager to come up and we'll turn this way. Want to present you with your retirement plaque and say thank you for your year of service. And I also have chairman's coin for you as well, so thank you for your service. Thank you. All right, next, we'd like to do recognitions of some of our employees for some successes that they've had. So there's Julia Graham here, Child Support Services. Thank you.
I'm not Julie Graham.
No, you're not.
I brought her with me today. I'm James McQueen, the Director of Cumberland County Child Support, and with me are Melanie Curry Supervisor and Julie Graham, a Child Support Agent 3. As part of the legislative mandates for child support, we're responsible, part of our responsibilities are the collection of current and past due child support. Each month, the state recognizes 20 individuals who have collected the largest single amounts in that month. However, last month, North Carolina Child Support recognized Julie Graham for the single highest child support collection in the state of North Carolina for the entire fiscal year 2025. Maybe you hear how much. Everybody wants to know, right? Total collections over $160,000. Ms. Graham worked hand in hand with the state of Texas for an individual who lived in Texas to actually make that collection. However, it was payable to a family here in North Carolina, completely paid off their case. So we just wanted to recognize her for the efforts that she made in that collection. Thank you, Julie.
Vice Chairman.
I just want to personally thank you. I serve on the Social Service Board. I know that the Director, Ms. Jackson, Brenda Jackson, is very proud of you and your department. And I also want to say, we really appreciate all of the work that you do for the families here. We know the importance of making sure support is there for all of our use of the day of the next generation will have an opportunity to be able to thrive and strive. So thank you so much for the work that you did. Thank you.
You're welcome. Turn this around. And y'all people want to? And Ms. Graham, Ms. Graham, Ms. Graham, Ms. Graham, Ms. Graham, before you, Ms. Graham, before you sit down, something I forgot to do. If you'll just come around, let the commissioners thank you. We started, haven't done this in the past and we're going to start doing it again. Just walk down, just walk in the well. There you go. Sorry, Ms. Lauren, I left you off this one.
I'm amazed all that money.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
All right, we're going to go ahead and we have one more recognition. This one is going to be a large one. It's, I think, why a lot of you are here. It's for our Community Impact Grant Program Award, and I'm going to recognize Vice Chairman Jones to do the recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, we'd like to say that we really appreciate all of the work that our nonprofits on the grant are putting in. We understand that it is a big task and without our nonprofits, definitely it would be a challenge for our community. The February 10th, 2025, American Rescue Plan, AARP Committee Meeting, the committee approved opening of the Cumberland County Impact Grant Applications. The Cumberland County Board of Commissioners authorized the creation of Cumberland County Impact Grant Program to allow nonprofit organizations that perform a public purpose to apply for up to 50,000 in direct assistance to reimburse qualifying organizations expenses, and the program was funded using a portion of Cumberland County's American Rescue Plan freed-up general fund capacity dollars. And the nonprofits organizations were able to apply for assistance through the program from February 21st through April 1st of 2025. And so now, the Board of Commissioners, after approving funding in the amount of several dollars for the following nonprofits organizations, if you are here as a representative for one of the nonprofits, please stand in place if you're here. First, we have United Way of Cumberland County, Rape Crises Volunteers of Cumberland. Okay, sorry, let me slow it down.
There you go.
Rape Crises Volunteers of Cumberland County. Give people a chance to stand if they're here and just.
And stay standing if you are.
Stay standing, please. Spring Lake Family Service Supports, Carolina Community Care, are you here? Cumberland County Coordinating Council on Older Adults, McEva Reeves Fellowship Homes, Thompson Child and Family Focus, Coastal Horizons, Connections of Cumberland County Incorporated, Heal Holistic Journey Incorporated, Youth Thrive of North Carolina, Community Health Interventions, Southlight Healthcare, Cumberland Health Net, Gate Beautiful Incorporated, Broken Chains JC, Vision Resource Center, Fayetteville Urban Ministries, Abene Chapel SDA Community Services, thank you for standing, Manor Church, Divine Empowerment International, Laban Baptist Church, United Ministries and Christ Church, Fayetteville Operation M as Much, Global Covenant Incorporated, and we might have some people in the overflow room, The Soul Harvest Apostolic Church, Greater First Baptist Church, Harvest Family Church, Rosa Harmon Ministries Internationals, Heal the Land Outreach Ministries, Jesus is the Answer Worship Center, Cumberland Road Volunteer Fire Department Incorporated, Stony Point Fire Department, Pierce Mill Fire Department, Grace Creek Volunteer Fire Department, Beaver Dam Volunteer Fire Department of Cumberland County, Wade Community Fire Department, Cotton Volunteer Fire Department, Eastover Volunteer Fire Department, Godwin Falcon Fire Department, the Youth Adults Project of Cumberland County, considered as the YAP, the Tulsa Initiative Incorporated, the 206 Project, Greater Life of Fayetteville, Future Endeavors Life Program, Employment Source, Youth Men's Christian Association of Fayetteville, Future Starts Now Incorporated, LIAM Outreach and Communities Support Center, Marjorie McLean Foundation, Carolina Crew, FC Incorporated, Let's Make It Happen Together Incorporated, the Group Theory Incorporated, Jais Youth Program, Penelope Praises, Follow the Spectrum, Las Amicas Fayetteville Elite Chapter, Legal Aid of North Carolina, Community Concerts of Fayetteville Incorporated, Fayetteville Symphony Orchestra Incorporated, the Gilbert Theater Incorporated, Combine Unified Services, Sand Hill Jazz Society, and the Cape Fear Botanical Gardens. We want to recognize these nonprofit organizations. We see that you all did show up, just as you show up for our community. And I would also want to allow you to know, as we see this as a full-packed house, in lieu of time, and we want to make sure we appropriately give you the well recognition that you need. So you will be receiving an email letter because we will be throwing you all a reception meet and greet. So stay tuned. You will be receiving that letter within this week so that we can extend and properly give you the well due recognition that you all deserve. Again, we thank you and let's give them all one grand hand. Thank you for all that you do for our community. And I'm sorry, and one more thing. And at that time, as, again, we like to do things first-class, world-class, as our chairman would like to say. So at that time, and Lewis, as you see, we are very appreciative of your time. At that time, you will be presented with your main checks at that time, too. The nice, big, pretty ones to keep on your desk. Thank you all so much.
Ceremonial ones.
Ceremonial checks. Yes, indeed.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll give you a couple minutes to, if you're going to leave, but thank you so much for being here. And board will rest in place for about five minutes while people exit. Oh, is he here? Okay, we'll go back into it. No, 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 we're going to go back into it. Stay here, sir. Stay here.
Oh, he must be coming out.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Come on, come on, come on.
We're going to do, we're going to do more.
What's up, man? You doing good?
Thank you so much.
It's good to see you.
Thank you. We'll be celebrating soon.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good morning.
Man, I'm doing good, man.
Thank you so much.
I got you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, yeah, you'll have a good one. Thank you so much. Definitely. You'll know this week.
Oh, good, man.
That's okay.
Thank you. Good seeing you again. Always a pleasure.
Yay.
That is nice.
is here, so we're going to go ahead and step back. So this time, I'd ask Commissioner Tyson to the podium.
It's all good.
And we'd like to recognize Mark E. Devon from the Sheriff's Office. His dates of service, September 30th, 1999, through May 31st, 2025. Just want to congratulate you on, please come up, sir. Congratulate you on your service, public service in any form is, is very much appreciated, but especially one when you're in our Sheriff's Office or anything dealing with law enforcement, and we appreciate the work that you've done in our community over the years, helping to protect the citizens in this community. So thank you, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Tyson. Thank you so much for your hard work. Well deserved. Retiring.
Yes, sir.
All right, sir, we're going to ask you to come around. Everybody else come around. Come shake everybody's hands. I mean, you're retiring. It's well deserved.
Thanks for your service. Enjoy your trip.
Enjoy, yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. And we have one other item before we move forward in recognitions. I was honored to be presented, so I wanted to bring it. The Commander General at Fort Bragg, General Anderson, presented a proclamation to the county in recognition of the 250th birthday of the United States Army. Therefore, the 18th Airborne Corps in Fort Bragg and our gathered community partners do hereby proclaim August 16th as a day to express and renew our solemn commitment and mutual support and dedication. Together, we honor our soldiers, families, veterans, and civilian employees and recognize the strength we find in the enduring partnerships which is built on shared dedication to freedom, security, and the well-being of our communities. Signed, Lieutenant General Greg Anderson and Command Sergeant Major Barker. So just wanted to make sure we presented this properly. I was able to, I saw General Anderson a couple weeks ago, and he presented it to me, so I wanted to make sure we brought it forward to the board and the public to make sure you saw that. Such a great connection between us and Fort Bragg and the importance of our community. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the approval of the agenda. County Manager Greer, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, there are two adjustments to the agenda, Chairman Devier. First, the item of business, 3A, approval to transfer of governance to, of the FACVP to the TDA will be moved to the September 11th Agenda Session, and then under the closed session, 6A, we will not need a closed session for the opiate litigation update, but we will need a closed session under the same paragraph for attorney-client privilege.
Commissioners, any other changes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes, motion to approve the agenda with the amendments made in regards to pulling one of the items of business and moving also the transfer of governance of the FACVP to our September 11th meeting.
Second, going to motion to approve the agenda as adjusted, been properly seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask for your vote on the approval of the agenda. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to the consent agenda. Commissioners, any changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none, Vice Chairman Jones, I'd ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yes, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, there's been a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
There are no items of business. Item four nominations, there are no nominations. Item five, there are no appointments. At this time, item six, we'll go, is our closed session. Vice Chairman Jones, I entertain a motion.
Yes, a motion that we have closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 for opiate litigation update.
Just for attorney-client.
Just for client, please stretch that. I'm reading wrong here. My apologies. I make a motion that we go into closed session for personal matter pursuant to NCGS. Client, NCGS 143-318.11A3 for
Client, NCGS 143-318.11A3 for attorney-client matters, correct?
Second. We've got a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client matters. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote to move into closed session. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we're in closed session.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
I'll go ahead and move, I'll go ahead and call for a motion to come out of closed session. Vice Chairman Jones?
Yes, motion to come out of closed session for attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS
There was no action taken by the Board. Correct, thank you, Marshal, Commissioner Fairclough. There's been a motion to come out of closed session, properly seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. And we're out of closed session. No action was taken by the Board. There's discussion was about a lease that will come back in front of this body at a future session for, for action. Hearing none, no other, no other business become for this body, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Vice Chairman Jones?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor to adjournment, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.